I need approval of the agenda.
Sure.
Second. Next, we'll move on to public comments. I do have one speaker's slip.
How many? I'll just show the vote here. And the vote on the agenda approval is four zero.
One speaker's slip for Mr. Lutz.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. My name is Ray Lutz and I'm with Citizens Oversight, citizensoversight.org. The goal of COPS, which we use as the acronym for that, is to encourage citizens to attend governmental meetings and thereby provide truly independent oversight of bodies such as the Grossman Healthcare District. The activities of COPS has been very successful since 2007, when we started it, ranging from helping stop Blackwater in the community of Petrerro to stopping religious and partisan videos on the government access channel in the city of Oklahoma, and many other cases. For over two years, our team has been attending and providing oversight to the Grossman Healthcare District, a body that receives almost no independent oversight. We have approved the openness, improved the openness of the body at first by getting agendas published on the website, and most recently by objecting to recent inappropriate closed sessions. Although it is impossible to know what might occur when groups have no independent oversight, recent events indicate that without our involvement, the former board member would have been improperly hired by the district, arguably in violation of Conflict of Interest regulations. Indeed, Board Member Staringer clearly expected to be hired, or he would not have suddenly resigned from his position on the board, a resignation which he promptly attempted to rescind when he did not get the position. And then, he proceeded to criticize the board for cowering to pressure from the public. Mr. Staringer admitted that he attempted to land this position partially to improve his pension by about tenfold, at least from this case, because after one year and a $60,000 a year position would be, his 18 years on the board would be treated at the higher rate due to an unfortunate loophole in CalPERS regulations. Indeed, the Grossman Healthcare District may have put a stop on this on their own accord, however, after seeing the special Director Emeritus title and the renaming of this building after him. It's clear to me, at least, that he may have had sufficient political clout with the board to have completed his deal had COPS not been present. Those two recent actions received no discussion nor any review at the cost of the cost of the district. Meanwhile, COPS has received no awards of recognition from the board, nor are we really asking for it, but it would be nice if we did get recognition from the public. We notice that the members of the Independent Citizens Oversight Committee, the ICBAQ, do not feel independent enough to find indiscretion of interest nor to entertain the possibility that Staringer wanted the position to improve his position to manipulate funds or continue any proper influence over funds or contracts. COPS is happy to see that the board approved a policy that no board member may take a position with the district without awaiting period of at least a year, that they have accepted this resignation of Staringer and did not attempt to allow him to improperly rescind his resignation, and now is obviously working to replace him. Many here today, thank you for everybody coming. Almost none of you have I seen before. I did not apply for this for myself because I have other plans for my time, that's the reason. It is a very prestigious position, and I'm happy to see that you guys are here, you all, ladies as well. Your qualifications are impressive. I would like to impress upon the board that their actions should be based strictly on the qualifications of the candidates and the needs of the district and not based on the wishes of the outgoing board member nor partisan political concerns. Please do it that way. To the candidates, I hope you have stepped forward as a service to the public and not as a stepping stone to higher office to get your name on a building, to improve other business concern, or to improve your CalPERS retirement somehow. It is my suggestion that a person with intimate knowledge of hospital and healthcare district operations should be selected for this important position, and the person should have no obvious conflicts of interest, of course, and clearly have the best interests in mind. For those people who are unsuccessful in the pursuit of this position, I would like to invite you to become a participant in the COPS program as we expand our reach in the coming year. I believe that with the clear success of COPS demonstrated by our efforts in the local area, we can be even more successful by deploying the concept in other regions, and that's going to be my focus in the next year. Thank you again for your kind cooperation. I look forward to working with both the appointed replacement director and those applicants who may want to help us provide, and everyone else. Thank you very much, and good to meet everyone. Great.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. Moving on to reports, discussion and possible action items. I have just a little bit of something I'd like to say before we start this meeting. The purpose of the meeting today is to select one of 24 candidates who applied to fill this remaining term of our board member Jim Staringer, who resigned on November 8th, 2010. During this process, we must be mindful of our mission statement, and let me just paraphrase it a little bit. "We are stewards of the public trust and will preserve and protect those resources entrusted to its care and to maintain and improve the physical and mental health of its constituents." As trustees of the healthcare district, we have a fiduciary responsibility for the ethical operations of this institution which was established in 1952. We're pleased that so many individuals have expressed an interest in serving their community as members of the Grossman Healthcare District Board. Since its founding, we've had 36 trustees serving the district of various lengths and time, and in virtually every instance, there's been a nexus between each trustee and healthcare. I'm confident that after this selection process is completed, the relationship will continue. I, for one, and I'm sure that my colleagues as well, have thoroughly read each and every application, and I believe that some of the trustees have also talked to the applicants. This selection process is not a popularity contest. It's one of the most difficult, challenging responsibilities that we as directors will have. Before we get started, I want to see if any of my other board members would like to say anything, comments? Dr. Long?
Yes, I would like to second kind of what she has said, that there are many, many of you are quite qualified. There are particular needs of the district at this time, and that may play a role in what is selected, the person who is selected. I do not know what my other, what my colleagues have decided to do, but that is how I shall approach it.
As you know, most of you I've spoken with, I've tried to contact as many of you as possible, some I was not successful. But again, there are so many of you that are so qualified, and it's going to be, you know, in my mind, I've gloryized lots of people, but it's what the district needs right now. And so, though you have many wonderful qualifications, I guess we have to view what the needs are at the moment and what the immediate future holds. But it's amazing how many of we qualified people are here and very impressive individuals and people of love.
I'll third the motion. Extremely hard and difficult for me to select all the qualifications here this morning were very, very impressive. Somebody who, some of you are living extraordinary lives. I'm pleased to see that somebody wants to be on this board with me so I can pick some tips up there. That's good. The, I want to guarantee to you that I did read everything and studied hard and make a selection, and I promise you I didn't watch one football game.
Okay, so number one is actions related to a previously noticed 11/23/10 board vacancy. Jeff?
Well, on item 1A, consideration of process to fill the board vacancy. You have a recommended process by the president before you. If anybody in the audience needs a copy, there are copies in the back. Just raise your hand and maybe we'll give you one. I can outline it just briefly. This is a process we've kind of developed over time as a way to both narrow a pretty significant risk of candidates by using a nomination process and then doing a balloting process that doesn't, doesn't influence anybody else on the board while the balloting is taking place. And basically, the process works by what is what's being recommended. Each of the board members will get to nominate up to two of you, a maximum of two of you. That would put in a pool then a maximum of eight candidates. Some of them, some of the board members may not want to nominate up to two, so, but potentially we would have up to eight candidates then in the pool. Then, I have ballots. And I have 20 rounds, but you know what? I hope we don't need that. If we do, we'll go get some, make some more. But they're numbered, they've got each of the board members' names on them with a blank spot, and we'll hand those out, and they will write from the up to eight candidates their choice, hand them back in, and I will read them. So that immediately takes what was private while they were doing it and puts it in the public domain by me stating, for instance, Director Emerson votes for candidate A, and so on and so forth. We will continue to hand those ballots out until somebody gets three votes, potentially, all right? There's even a little fail-safe process at the end of the procedure that if for some reason, after a certain number of ballots up to board's discretion, we don't get to three, they each would be able to nominate someone else, and that would potentially expand the list from a maximum of eight to a maximum of 12, and then we continue with the ballot. That's a fail-safe. We start, though, with each of you getting three minutes to address the board, any Q and A the board may have. I have all your names in this pretty Christmas bowl here, green and red, and we'll draw, and I will draw them, as we can, just trying to get a picture there, but I will draw them. And that's, and that's the process. First, the board should agree whether they like this process or would like to make any amendments to it.
I make a motion to approve the process.
Second.
Please vote. Now, without objection, I would like to ask that two applicants go in first and second because of some things that are going on in their lives and they need to get out of here. So, Mr. Johnny Gonzalez and Mr. Robert Gordon. So we'll take Johnny first.
Good morning. Good morning, board members, guests. My name is Johnny Gonzalez. I'm not a retired golf professional. It was posted, I'm a active PGA golf professional. I'm currently the leaseholder here at Sun Valley Golf Course, and also I do teach in Rancho Santa Fe at the Farms Golf Club. First of all, I don't know what you're looking for in terms of, if it's a medical background or anything in the medical field, I see many great doctors and nurses and people with way more qualifications than I can even begin to be with. But if you're looking for someone who is involved in the community, who is willing to spend some time and effort and energy, that's me. I'm here to help, and I want to make sure that, that you know that, and I've done many things in the past, most of it has been in golf or in charity work, from cystic fibrosis for a young man that had passed away, student of mine, we did tournaments, raised money for cystic fibrosis, helped the Home Guiding Hands, I've participated in, again, in many of my ways is in golf. I'm at a point in my career now that I don't play as much as I used to, I'm not as active, I have a few health issues that I'm working on, and I'm looking for ways to help the community and participate in, in our great community that we have here. I'm fortunate to live here in La Mesa, it's been a great place to call home, I really enjoyed it. It's funny, Mr. Janz was on council when I first got the lease at Sun Valley Golf Course, and I see that our great Mayor Art Madrid is here. And so, other than that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer, but I'll be here at your service if you need it. Thank you.
Any questions? Johnny?
Pardon?
Are there any questions of Johnny? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Mr. Robert Gordon.
Thank you for allowing me to come in early. My wife has currently checked into the ER, and I'm going over there afterwards to see how she's doing. I'm a native Californian, I've been in San Diego County for quite a few years. My educational background is, I was an electrical engineer, the Navy allowed me to use that in the Civil Engineering Corps for some years, and then after that, my principal educational or my principal work history was with insurance companies. Don't take that as a bad thing, I didn't. I was a safety engineer, I wasn't on the other end of the insurance industries, and I, in that capacity, I worked with several hospital districts, and although my emphasis there was the safety activities of the employees and the patients, I got to learn quite a bit about the hospital operations. So I feel like I've got a pretty fair idea of what, what goes on in hospitals. And then through, unfortunately, through my wife, I've learned a lot about how to be a patient in a hospital and what some of their challenges are. I've been retired for a little over two years, I live in Campo. I have a great amount of time available now, and I thought it'd be a perfect opportunity to give back to the community and use some of my expertise. I have to notice that all of the board members are healthcare personnel, which is probably a good thing, but I don't see any engineering people in here, and I thought, well, maybe an engineering background might be useful, because we look at things slightly differently. I'm looking forward to your consideration, and I'd be very happy to help you out in the next few years if you're looking for someone. Getting up and coming to 7:30 board meetings isn't a problem. I spent my entire life on airplanes, and I used to get up very early and go to the airport, so it's not a problem. Thank you.
Can I just ask you one question? Have you ever considered for running for this board before?
No, I, in fact, I, well, of course, I didn't even know that the board existed, I just saw the advertisement or the note in the paper, and I thought, oh, what a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The guest, one.
Please, thank you. I will, I will proceed here, stir them up a little bit. Hopefully, we got it right, we didn't put anybody's name in here twice. Okay, first, or third, actually, we have Charles Robbins.
Thank you for taking my application into consideration. I believe you have my resume for you. I want to address a few more items. I am a Navy San Diegan, graduated from Hoover High School, and then went in the Navy after during the war, and at State College, and then I benefited from finance for 32 years. I've done a lot of volunteering work, not only with Grossman Hospital, but also with the Grossman Community Cancer Association, of which I was an author. I have all types of time and I am, I'd be more than happy to spend my time presenting that I have time with the hospital, but I would like to move more information and items to you, your procedure and ideas you have presented.
Are there any questions of the committee?
Thank you, sir.
We have James Miletic.
My name is James Miletic, and appreciate you guys having me here this morning, and I want to think, get something first off my chest. I want to thank the board and the Grossman Hospital staff, the doctors, the nurses, all the way down to the custodians. I was in this hospital three times in the last year for cancer, and I want to thank all of you because I'm cancer-free, and it's because of the staff here and prayers from my family. My family thanks you all too, because you've got a great job on me, and I could never thank you enough for that, it means a lot to everybody, and you deserve a hearty thanks for me and my family. And the reason I'm here is I thank you for being here, and I think I can make a difference. I've recently been on, I'm still on the Padre de Amores Board as Board of Directors, and I basically, I was on that board, I'm still on it for the last four years, and I've made a difference with those people on the construction end of things. You're in a heavy construction mode right now, I know that now, as a member of the Oversight Committee, and I think with my background in heavy construction through many years of my life, many aspects of construction, I can do some great things and save the hospital some money by asking questions, the right kind of questions, and move on from there. So, I can answer any questions you have, you see my resume, I can make a difference, and I can make positive things and make things happen, perhaps a little bit faster than I normally do, because there are widely different ways to do things. So, that's where I'm at, I'd be glad to answer any questions for you, and again, thank you for everything you've done for me. And that's great for any questions.
Are you still on the Padre?
Yes, I'm on, I'm on the board until, what is it, January 3rd or something?
Oh, January 3rd.
January 3rd, yes. Okay, other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Dirk Epperson.
My pleasure to address you, and I'm grateful for this opportunity. My experience, talents and education are unique, yet relevant to this board's needs and the needs of the constituents. I have a master's degree in public administration and this emphasis in organizational leadership. I also am a civil engineer, and I work for the city of La Mesa. I have a lot of experience in serving and serving my community. From a very young age, I've expressed an interest and gone after service to others. I served in the Boy Scouts of America and became an Eagle Scout at a young age, and also, after that, I served my church in going on a mission to Venezuela for two years. I had an opportunity to meet with the people down there and to serve them, and to help build homes and serve and volunteer in hospitals and see their needs from a different country's perspective. I am fluent in Spanish, I can read and write in Spanish. I am currently the president of our men's group at our church that serves the men 18 to 40 years old. It's a great group, and we do lots of service for the community. As an engineer for the city, I've been able to work closely with various groups, including Walk San Diego and the City of La Mesa Wellness Committee. By doing that, I've been able to institute programs that help people of this community become healthier. One of those things is instituting urban walking trails. This past year, the city of La Mesa won an award from Walk San Diego for these walking trails, and it's a way that people can get out and enjoy one another's company and walk within the city on the sidewalks. My job includes making these sidewalks safer, and with my construction background, I'm able to see how we can move forward as a district and how we can create a safer built environment. I know that the funds of this district help fund projects, both infrastructure and non-infrastructure. Infrastructure projects such as safe routes to school, and non-infrastructure projects that include educating, educating the public and the students.
Mr. Emerson, 30 seconds.
Thank you very much. I know that my experience will be helpful, and it's unique, but relative, and it will greatly help and put a perspective on this board that will allow us to move forward and help our constituents be healthier and better. I thank you for your time.
Any questions, Mr. Epperson? Thank you very much.
Good morning, and I'd like to thank the board for their service to the community. I think a lot goes on beyond these meetings, and I know how hard you work. And I think also, I wanted to say, I feel privileged to live in an area of the county where we do have a healthcare district, not every part of the county has this important healthcare resource. I would be very pleased to continue my service to the community by bringing my energy and expertise to the board. I believe my knowledge and experience would complement the members of the existing board. As you see from my application letter, much of my experience derives from years of teaching, research and community service at San Diego State as a professor of public health management, kind of looking at the business side of healthcare all these years. In addition, I have clinical, I, in my formative years, I had clinical experience, and my consulting was largely centered around quality improvement issues, and the other asset, I think all of you know, I've been for the last four years a member of the ICBAQ, and I would bring a lot of experience and understanding, and I think be able to hit the so-called, hit the ground running. I have good working understanding of the responsibilities of the board. In addition to finishing what I would term kind of the adolescent stage that we are in with Prop G, I think the other thing that looms ahead is the renegotiation of the extension of the operating agreement with Sharp Healthcare. That has to go to the public for a vote, upper-down vote. My knowledge on healthcare issues here in East County, as well as my connections with public health, will bring a new strength to the board, allowing it to better anticipate and fulfill its, the second element of its mission, which is to anticipate and recognize the unmet healthcare needs of our communities, the communities that we serve, and provide suitable services to satisfy those otherwise unmet needs to the greatest possible extent consistent with available resources. That's the second part of our district's mission, and I really relate to that as a public health professional. Despite enactment of the recent health insurance reforms by the federal government, we're in a slow economic recovery, our district is undergoing significant changes in the demographics, the aging of the population, the addition of large numbers of immigrants. And I think what that's going to mean for the district and the hospital, Sharp Grossman Hospital, is that number of uninsured and underinsured is going to continue to increase, and this is going to continue to bring significant fiscal pressures to bear on the hospital and the district.
Michael, 30 seconds.
Right. And I think I can bring some expertise in bringing the community together, community resources such as the community health centers that are an important asset also in our district. As also as a health educator, I would certainly relish the opportunity to help make sure that the healthcare training center, as part of Prop G, is finished with the greatest benefit to the community. Thank you for your consideration.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Peddick.
It's a pleasure being here on the other side of the aisle, so to speak. I think the most significant qualification is the experience that I've had so that I can hit the ground running, so to speak. And that's perhaps relevant because I'm not seeking a second career, I'm seeking to fill out the two-year term that is before the board, so that if the board wished to have a pledge from me at your request, I will be running for, I will be here for two years only and not running for reelection. I, I think that a lot of it has been accomplished during the period of time that I was on the board, but I did just serve on this board, I served on the Corporation Board, the Grossman Hospital Corporation Board, and I also served on the Sharp Healthcare Board. And when I was president of ACHD, we inaugurated a malpractice insurance program that saved the hospital millions of dollars while we were in the program. It was a self-funded program, and then when we withdrew to join the Sharp Healthcare System program, we got about $12 million, which was a huge windfall. I think that one of the most significant things that happened when I was on the board was my spearheading, really, the affiliation with the Sharp system. It was not popular, Michael recalled, it was not popular at the time, but I think it was in the best interest of the board primarily for two reasons. One is contracting, we needed to have more clout as a system to contract with Medi-Cal and with the various insurance companies. Standing alone, we couldn't demand the same Standing alone, we couldn't demand the same fees that we could demand as a system. And second, there's the economies of scale. That is, we can do things more reasonably and cheaply if we're part of the system, where the system provides certain over services. For example, the healthcare bill requires the hospitals be, have veteran information technology and that they implement this. It is kind of a carrot and a stick kind of situation. So the medical records are all electronic and the Sharp Healthcare System is already, I've talked to Mike Murphy about this, has already done a lot in that area, so we're ahead of the curve. But those economies of scale can best be done by the entire system as opposed to an individual standalone hospital.
George, 30 seconds.
Well, I only have two more minutes, though. I'm pleased to see that the board and the hospital corporation are working together well. And I was pleased to serve on the committee that Leroy Knutson chaired, that was the steering committee for the passage of Proposition G and worked on the calling of hundreds of people to try to get that passed and was so pleased to see it passed. That's the kind of cooperation that I'm very pleased to see and that I would work to further. And of course, it's going to be important on the renegotiation of the lease when that comes up. I believe that is essentially the situation. Having served on the board for so long.
Time, it is time ends up.
Any questions, Mr. Hurst?
At least I want to be the first one to use all the time.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Leroy Knutson.
Thank you. I'm glad you had this time. Thanks, George, for the plug. I did, I was chairman of Proposition G, who was very successful. We needed two-thirds of the vote and we got way over that. My co-chairman was Steve Rell. I was talking to Jim and he appointed me to Grossmont Hospital Board now and also on the Finance Committee. I too would like to only serve his remaining two years. I don't intend to run for reelection. I just, on the last election, there were only three people that showed up, but we're on the ballot. And that kind of bothered me that there might not be that many people here that would like to serve again. So I'm delighted that they got the publicity they did and all the people that are here. I think they have some well-qualified people and you're young as a hard one. I commend you for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
William Hare.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to perhaps become a member of the board. I also am a member of the Independent Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. And through that process, have gained a particular insight and knowledge into the operations of the hospital, the complexities of the projects that we are currently undertaking and that we are having to deal with in the future. Formalist in my mind is initially the quality of healthcare throughout the district. This district, I believe, has an exemplary record of the quality of healthcare. And I think it is an absolute commitment that whoever feels this board seat makes sure that we have that same sort of commitment to the quality of healthcare. In addition to that, the complexities facing the district short-term in the construction project are very complex. The required financing, the budgeting, the underwriting, the fork, the development of the extended facilities is critical to the growth and development of the district. I believe that this district serves well over 750,000 people, which is an enormous number of people. And I believe that throughout the construction process, that we have the best facility available to serve that public. Many have mentioned the upcoming lease negotiations. My experience and background in financing, construction, real estate development, negotiations will bode well for helping in that process and negotiating a fair and equitable lease for all parties.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst.
Thomas Oaks.
Good morning. Very happy to be here this morning. The mission statement that's established by this organization is very interesting to me. And I'm going to address some of the issues on there. Preserve and protect the resources. Maintain and improve physical and mental health. Monitor health services under contract to assure patients' needs are met. Anticipate and recognize unmet healthcare needs and provide suitable services to satisfy these unmet needs. As a board member, if we are to improve the physical and mental health, there are a few things that I think need addressing. My experience in the Department of Pediatric Medicine at the University of Utah for a PhD degree, I developed an vision of what prevention can do and the study of epidemiology can do in a district like this. My employment at Medical Methods Research with the Kaiser Foundation, Kaiser Permanente Foundation in Oakland, California, provided me a very unique experience with computers in medicine. It was very early effort then and I was involved interviewing doctors and nurses on the hospital floor to evaluate and judge their impressions and suggestions for organization of a patient, of a computerized patient medical record. This provides a basis for understanding a computer system that you have in this district and which is actually a horrible system. In the name of prevention and maintenance of health of the constituents and to anticipate the unmet healthcare needs and provide suitable services to satisfy unmet needs, perhaps the district can support a program that offers individuals the opportunity to participate in a personal health appraisal. Health appraisal is to be highly computerized and available to the constituents and providers. Constituents can have a health checkup managed by physicians for the monitoring and improvement of individual health. I don't see that actively in the district. I have been awarded seven federal research grants, three federal contracts, two health-related research grants from the state of Arizona. And I've agreed with all federal and state research grant applications and that procedure. And I have been awarded those grants. I served in the US Marine Corps. I've worked in the Boy Scouts all my life. I co-founded with the Parahelix Institute.
Dr. Oaks, 30 seconds.
Okay. 501(c)(3) and I've had full-time university teaching. I've always been a payroll in a business I've been in. And one of the more important things I'd like to emphasize is we have to address the most comical diseases that infect people that come into the hospital and we need to address that clearly, perhaps in immunizations and in ER. And the most important thing I want to talk about is the Central Energy Plant. I notice there's no effort in there at renewable energy. And I'm in favor, my work and employment is in solar and wind energy. And this new facility must be because of the California Air Resources Board requirement.
Fine, Mr. Oaks.
Fine heavily if you don't have some green resources in this plant.
It's time.
I've ran three times on the board and I'd like, I can run again if I have a very good baseboard. Now that's, I got 20,000 votes.
It is time. John Hammerstrand.
Good morning, Board of Directors, chairs. Public, John Hammerstrand. I'm a retired environmental health specialist registered for the state of California. I've known about this Board of Directors since 1980 when I used to work with Dr. Herrick, not as a member of Grossmont, but as an outsider in his private practice. And I thought that in order to be on the Board of Directors, that you had to be in the district. Did I know that Alpine was in the district, I would have been over here probably in the That's it. So the question is, who has an eye on health for the community? And I think everyone here has an eye on health for the community. And what's your healthcare needs? You know, diversity is the big thing today that we have to work with. And that's because we want to work with it, we have a need to work with it. And that's because we have people that are in the district that need healthcare service. And it's a mixed bag. And it is not recession-proof, so we have dollars coming and we have dollars going. And we have a sort of unemployment. But what is the need of Grossmont Hospital for the poor and for the middle class? It's always an ever-changing environment. There's an increase for nurses, there's an increase for doctors, there's an increase for emergency room service. That's a challenge. And the question is, how do we grow? Well, we grow with the needs and the wants of the community. And that's because people are living longer. The doctors, the nurses, the technicians and everybody retiring, so we have a new need for new people to serve the community. We need training. We need education. We need the supplemental staff here and there. We need rehab.
Number three, 30 seconds.
Okay, we need rehab professionals. And the question is, is there a gap between the doctors and the hospital at Grossmont? I think that we are attempting to always use that gap. And in essence, what it is, that all healthcare providers need to be able to provide and serve a variety of cultures and it's rich and poor. The unmet needs, it's the diversity.
It's time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Virginia Hall.
Hi, my name is Virginia Hall. I'm a native San Yegen and I've lived in San T for the past 30 years. I've thought about being on the Grossmont Health Board for quite some time now. With my medical background, I thought it would be very interesting and exciting to be a part of taking, a part of improving the healthcare in our community. When the vacancy arose, I thought this is a great opportunity. I have well over 20 years of nursing and seven years of business background. I took my first nursing job at 18 years old at Alvarado Hospital as a nurse's aide. I put myself through college, graduating in 1978 as an RN. Today, I still hold my nursing license. It was one of the things I noticed that the newspaper had said I was a former nurse, but I actually still have my license. I have worked in various positions in acute care hospitals, along with working as a nurse clinician and also in clinical trials, as a clinical trial coordinator in research, where I participated in a research board. I've also presented at national nursing conferences in Philadelphia, Orlando and Las Vegas. I am a published writer. In 2004, I had an article published in Organized Nursing, as well as I wrote a patient education booklet for Pritchett Hall that was published in 2005. I left nursing in 2004 to start my successful real estate business. And I've been recognized by the San Diego Magazine as client star of real estate in three years in a row. And I've gone on to obtain several designations, including the gold standard certified residential specialist, which only 4% of the nation's realtors hold. I've been actively involved in volunteering in my community most of my life. In the past, I headed my children's, headed up a children's ministry at a local church for 15 years, as well as I was on a Little League Board for three years. And I presently serve on the San T Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors and I am the incoming Executive Board Secretary. Besides my nursing background and business background, I believe what sets me apart is my ability to work positively and cooperatively with people who have a common goal to improve the community health, community physical and mental health. I see the responsibility of being a public steward as a very serious one. I would work to preserve and protect the resources entrusted to the board. I have the ability to negotiate and think outside the box to solve problems. I listen and communicate effectively. And I will act as an ambassador for the community, for the board in the community. It would be an honor to serve.
30 seconds.
It would be an honor to serve the board and I believe that I have the heart and the knowledge that you are looking for. So I ask you to select me as the new director. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.